All right, and so the girls got things rolling back there.
Yeah, they're okay.
So I will call the regular meeting of the Amory Board of Education to order. And our first item is the consent agenda items.
So you say I have the consent agenda items?
I have the consent agenda items.
Okay.
And so you're gonna make a motion to approve them.
A motion to approve.
Joe did them and he approves and...
I'll second that.
Dale seconds, so... All in favor say aye.
She's confident.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
And opposed, no. Okay, we got that. And I got community comments, so I have Fritz Coulter from Apple River. And his topic is income and expense report. Please come to the microphone, Fritz, and then you get to tell us who we are.
That guy read this real time?
I should've read this, shouldn't I? Yes.
You can do it right now.
Fritz, I gotta read this. If you want to take a seat while I read this whole thing.
It only takes Keith about five minutes.
You can stay there if you want.
Just wait there.
I apologize, I'm sorry. All right, the guidelines for addressing the Board of Education. Welcome to this meeting of the School District of Amory Board of Education. We are pleased that you are interested in the work of the Board, School Board. You may address the Board only during community comments time on the Board meeting agenda. Any resident, district employee, or guest invited by the Board may make comments about any decision, policy, or Board agenda, meeting agenda items. The following guidelines have been established for addressing the Amory Board of Education. For those wishing to speak before the Board, a sign up sheet will be available prior to the start of the meeting. If the topic noted on the sign up sheet is deemed to be out of order, the presiding Board member will inform the person wishing to speak prior to the start of the meeting. Community comments must pertain to a Board decision, policy, or Board meeting agenda item. Comment time is limited to five minutes per person. However, the time limit may be increased or decreased at the discretion of the presiding Board member. Political speeches which are not materially related to Board decisions, policies adopted by the Board, or are not about a Board meeting agenda items are strictly forbidden. Personal criticism of members of the Board of Education or employees of the school district are also strictly forbidden. Please stand to be recognized. After being recognized, state your name and the municipality where you live for the record. The Board normally receives citizen input and does not respond or debate. If there is a need for an answer or response to a concern or issue, the district administrator or one of the other administrators will get back to you with a response. If your concern requires Board action, it may be placed on the agenda of a future Board meeting. Thank you for your patience, Fritz. Now you can go. I hope I didn't wear you out.
My question to the Board is, will you supply a detailed income and expense report at every Board meeting? Nothing as expansive as, you know, what we've got in here, but something that shows where the income came during the past month and where the expenditures went during the past month. It is required by state law. No response?
Well, I think we can, well, we can talk with our, with the Administrator and we can discuss that and somebody can get back to you.
Okay, it's Wisconsin Statute 120 dot 11. Paragraph four.
Thank you. Now we'll go on to our administrative and committee department reports.
Sean, you got anything?
Nope, you're up, Josh.
Okay. It's been a successful third year.
Pretty much ask for vouchers, right? Expenses and income.
If, if he wants, do you want to go grab him? If he wants an answer, we have the vouchers, you know, several down, we can communicate it then. That's what he's asking for, right?
I think he's asking for like a printout, something, you know, that would be...
You're approving the vouchers and that's, that's the expenditures for the month.
But that's not a source of income or anything.
Right.
Part of them he has to report their revenue coming in for the month. Where the income came in and where the expenditures were each month, which I think is, you could come into the office and look at, but if he wants like something in, you know, easily accessible in print.
I'm not aware of requirement to provide monthly income, like revenue, where that came into the district monthly. So expenditures, yes, and they have to be approved, but I am not aware of a requirement for, certainly look into it.
Yeah. Sir, what's your name? Fritz?
Fritz.
So this month I had the opportunity to go over vouchers for just over an hour before I came to our meetings. And so what I looked at was all the expenses. And I know in the past that's what these people have done, is looked at vouchers before. Now like again, we, I guess I can't tell you about the income, but I can tell you that I looked at the vouchers for over an hour before we had meetings today. And I guess that's what each one of us have been doing. Are you looking for like, what are you looking for in regards to?
It's not public. That's what I'm asking. It should be public. Anybody here should be able to get information as to what income, what expenses you had during the past month. It's called transparency. You don't have that now. Once, once a year we get this thing, it's four pages of information which no one understands. Something is simple. We have this much income, these are our expenses. I don't expect you to list every item, but if you have that, you can check.
If, is it something, if he stays here, I can bring it?
The Treasury Report also reports that, but that's something that's in the Board Book every month, and that's what, that meets a requirement, and that's what it is. Have you seen the Treasury Report that's posted in the Board Book that, that shows the revenue and expenses for the month?
Does it look normal?
Yeah, it's posted every month. Part of the...
It goes live after the meeting ends and it's available to the public.
So is this all the expenditures? Or are you just...
Not detailed.
Not detailed. If you want detailed, you need to make a request to that, the district office.
The state statute says it has to be detailed.
It goes by the format of the district. I'll look further into it, but, but it's, that's the detail they expect from the state standpoint. So they are, they have a summary of expenses and revenues.
So I'm, I'm looking right here. I can see the total income. Three million, four hundred, ten thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars and sixty cents. The expenditures, total expenditures.
And it does break it out into categories?
Yeah, there's fifteen categories. Expenditures for the month, four million, seven hundred and sixty thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars and seventeen cents. And there's a cash balance of almost two point...
And I can bring it out, but basically the vouchers that he's talking about, that Joe talks about ties out to the vouchers that are on the Treasurers Report, and that's what he's reviewing. And then there's other major categories too, so I don't know if we're able to bring that up back here or not.
I can bring up last month's.
Yeah, bring up last month's, that's fine.
So this is how you get to it. You go to District, Board of Education, and then to Board Book. And then you can choose a meeting, so we'll look at last month's regular meeting.
Yeah, and if I'm, if I remember correctly, after these are approved at our meeting, this information that we're looking at here for tonight, after it gets approved, is on, will be approved as of tonight, and then gets on the school website, what, tomorrow, Becky, or this week?
Tonight, before I leave, I usually make it go live.
Yeah, so it's...
So here's the...
It's there.
This is the Treasury Report.
Correct, yeah, that's it.
Is that kind of the information that you're looking for? Are you saying that you would like to have this in print format at the meeting, or is online?
It shows our payrolls, it shows, you know, everything for the month.
Well, there's some things that have unusual expenses, like the infamous signs.
And that would show on here if that was the case. If you had our expenditures.
That would be, would be...
Go back to the vouchers.
Is it a separate item or is it just in with everything else?
If it's a voucher for the check that's cut and sent out, it's in vouchers, that's reviewed by the Board of Education. And they certainly question anything that's large amounts like that. In fact, that situation you're talking about was discovered by the Board, but during the voucher process. So that, that's how the system's supposed to work. So if something is questioned, they bring it up.
I guess I was just expecting more than blankets.
Well, it's not really blanket. It shows, I mean, you can request a, a listing of our, any of our vouchers for the month if you want. That's more detailed. That's not, that's not what's required.
But it's, it's not blanket, it's line itemed right there with three clicks on the Internet. You can get it and anyone else in the room can get it all, you have to go as right here. So it is every month, and...
I take that back, she does do that.
And in that, it is listed every month. We are in compliance with the state statute. It's right here.
There is a different Board member every month that is responsible to review those vouchers. So it's, so that's kind of how we build in an oversight, so it's not just, you know, the same people doing the vouchers all the time from the Board. So one month, we are on a rotating basis every five months.
Once every five months, yeah.
So then, so we have that oversight, and then anytime we see those vouchers that we question, like you're talking about with the signs, that did happen, and then we'll have a conversation with Andy, or we'll have a conversation with Dr. Dierfle or whoever would be in response to that. And then all of those vouchers have a, a name associated with them too, that who those expenses are tied with. And we have actual receipts and, I mean, it is a very detailed, it is a box. And Joel, this was his first time doing it. Tonight, I think he was overwhelmed with how much information is actually in there. So it's a whole box. And then we're able to take those and once we see that there's nothing, that would be a red flag, or that would be funny business, or something that we would question that would be out of the ordinary, and obviously the more and more that we do this as a Board member, the more and more we get accustomed to what's normal, what's not, those expenditures that look off and that don't. And that's how we kind of calibrate if there's questions that we ask. But every voucher has a check with it. That check is detailed, where it went to. I, the accounting process is firm, and I run a business and it's, that is firm. So, but anybody that ever has any questions is more than welcome to question any of that information. I realize it's on the Internet and it may be hard to get to at some point, but I think we're, I think we've done what we need to do to be compliant. If there's questions, I think anybody is, you know, willing to ask and sit, sit down with anybody that would have a question with it, so. But those oversights are built in. I know every time I do vouchers, Andy, I think you answered two or three questions a month from me, and everybody's very forthcoming how that happens, so. Yeah, and it really does help, like you'll, you know, when we're doing vouchers, you'll see the list, but then you can also look through every single, you know, electric bill and credit card statements and, you know, all the invoices and teacher requests for, you know, spending money in their classroom. Pencils, teacher requests for pencils. And, you know, it's allocated in the budget, but here's their, you know, their Amazon shopping cart list or whatever, you know, so it's kind of all in there. So usually when you're flipping through, you can, you can see what those amounts are and what, what they were spent on.
It also had the big ticket items too, insurances and retirements and payroll. It just, I mean, it, it was a lot to deal with before coming in here. I just, again, being my first time doing it and, you know, definitely having my questions of transparency of things in the past, it's a lot to deal with, and I wanted you to come back and hear that, especially because the next couple of things we're going to talk about is vouchers. And I wouldn't have a single problem with showing you how we, how I did them today. But I, there's a lot to it. And again, I know you're getting some line items rather than specific details that you really are looking for, I guess, but it, the ability's here. And I just, I just didn't want you walking away without, without really us talking about... I'll be honest, it is, it's, I don't know how you're going to get it more transparent other than just letting people look at me going through every check I just went through.
It's ours. It's literally ours. And I, I understand the want for transparency, I totally understand that, but I don't, I mean, I understand that you look at that document that you get once a year and you think, nobody understands it. It would be very difficult, it would take you a whole day to sit down and look through all of this. I don't know what kind, like more detailed you want, when you said you didn't really want detailed, but this is detailed in a way that I think people can understand it. It's not going to match up for you because you don't work in this realm every day, so it's very hard for that. We're asking that you trust the people that are here to look through those. It is a, it is a system of checks and balances. There is oversight, and that is, that's the Board's job.
It's also later audited.
That's also audited again.
Yep. You know, that's...
But I, I understand. I was the one who filed the voucher for the signs. And we had reasons to question things that were in the past, and that's, our job as a Board is to stay vigilant. And we haven't had any more of those situations. That's good to remind the public that it is available online, because not everybody maybe knows that this is a monthly something that, statement that you can access online.
Thanks for coming back.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Josh.
Okay. It's been a really good start of the school year, the high school. Really happy with how things are going. All sports teams are having a lot of fun. Mixed bag of successes here and there, but everybody's having a good time. September fourteenth, we had, actually had a big moment. We did our senior class photo for the year and had a key meeting with them to discuss all things graduation. We tried to get the ball rolling for them early, so they're thinking about things like scholarships and, and their future, so it was kind of a fun day actually. Our marching band won a number of awards at the Glenwood City Parade a couple of weeks ago, participated in Fall Fest this past weekend, as we had a number of students participate in the Fall Festival events, including the Miss Amory competition. We've had tryouts in our, for our play that's coming up in November, Little Women, and they've been cast for that. So I'd encourage you to block off those dates so you can take that in. We've been involved in numerous meetings to discuss referendum planning, and we've got some of those people here today that'll update you on those meetings. Future stuff, FFA, corn mazes and hayrides. So they did kind of a test run this past weekend for the Fall Festival, but they've got kind of their main event coming up in late October, and I'm sure that'll be a wonderful event. Homecoming, coming up the week of September twenty-seventh through September thirtieth. On September twenty-sixth, high school and middle school staff are getting together for a in-service on relationship building with students. We're excited about that day. October third, we're taking our high school staff up to Shell Lake to visit Northwood Tech's new healthcare facility as part of our state mandated ACP in-service. And I've seen, it's basically a facility for teaching kids how to do occupations in the medical field, and it's, we're really excited about going up and checking that out. Of course, there'll be other things to the Northwood Tech process that we'll learn about that night. October sixth at the high school will be our ACP parents, student, teacher conferences, looking at career opportunities through Zello and career paths for students. It's a great time for parents, students, and teachers all to get together. And then on October twelfth, we have the optional PSAT test for juniors who are looking for national merit recognition, and that's an optional thing. We get twenty-five seats every year, and some years we don't fill them with the juniors, so we trickle down into the sophomores or freshmen who want a chance to take the PSAT as a practice. Any questions from high school? Thank you.
All right, Josh mentioned homecoming and, you know, just what everyone in the district's pretty excited for that event, and it's going to be a big district-wide parade at the end of the day, getting ready. I really have enjoyed going to that and seeing it, one of the few times that you get everyone K-12 and, or pre-K-12 into one place, it's really fun. And we'll follow up with a big Warrior Way celebration following that. Josh had mentioned the in-service coming up, and we're real excited about, we have a speaker that's going to come in and really talk about trauma services and how to deal with kids that have suffered from trauma, and the best approach is to be a trauma-sensitive school. It's something we've been working on for quite some time. Parent-teacher conferences, yeah, at the middle school, October third from four to eight and October sixth from one to eight. And we will be sending out our link to the signup portal, which will go out to parents tomorrow morning. And then parents can sign and pick up the link, and they can do conferences in multiple ways. They don't have to come in anymore, they can do them remotely, which is nice. And we'll also be running some meetings in the, towards the end, or the middle of the evenings there about standards for screening, how to understand your report card. We also have a Destination Imagination signup night on Monday, the October third, which is one of our Gift Intended Student Programs. It's kind of a neat, creative problem-solving, kind of combines that and drama and lots of different things, applied sciences to show how they can master and solve problems and compete against other schools. So sign up for that's coming up, and that invite went out to parents. We have student leadership training for our students on October eleventh. We'll be getting notices out to parents about that and continue to work on some student leaders. We have peer mediator training coming up on October twentieth, and that's a program where for smaller problems, we have kids that are trained to help mediate out issues with their peers. Obviously, we're not going to throw them into something heavy, but if it's a smaller thing, we'll do that. And then peer tutor training, so we have peer tutors that can help students that maybe need some assistance in, usually it's math, and they will be trained on how to help work with some kids that maybe need some help in study hall and how to maintain confidentiality and all of that. And we'll be working with our students, setting some goals coming up for this year for themselves. And then our big harvest dance is October thirteenth, the first middle school dance of the year, so that should be fun. Any questions for the middle school?
See, you're representing tonight?
I'm representing tonight, yeah.
Itchin' to get out of here, aren't you?
Oh, I'm good.
I got nine minutes, yeah.
I got a whole lot to say tonight though, Tom. I think you're going to get out of here.
I'm all right, I'm all right. Thank you.
Are you going to do Jessica's or...
Nope. Paula's up. Paula's up.
All right. English Language Arts, we've been working on it, Jessica and I, with Teresa Stanley from CISA to discuss topics and determine some training sessions for our teachers concerning our new HMH curriculum and for our reading, getting some staff members trained on the twenty-sixth, twenty-eighth, and twenty-ninth of September. So Teresa will be coming in from CISA to help lead that, so we're excited about that. Our open house at Lean Elementary, our staff held the open house, it was well-attended. We were able to get staff in to work with teachers, and parents dropped off supplies, they stopped in for a back-to-school photo booth for a meet-and-greet with me, and that was really fun. The kids really enjoyed that photo booth, so it was really fun to be able to meet families that way. Our PBIS, our Positive Behavior Interventions and Support System, is, our People Service Team has been working hard to communicate our way or way, or be responsible, be respectful, and be safe. Each grade level alongside with our classroom teachers, specialists, and help from our support staff has been, have been working together for that, so it's been really nice. For example, the students have been participating in reteaching of expectations in the hallway at recess or in the classrooms. Our Crisis Committee within the Lean Building has been meeting to review the Safety Manual, update information, and discuss areas that need some review or to ask questions to gain some answers. So that's been really nice for me, being new in the building, to just really kind of review that, that manual and figure out exactly the I's and the T's that need to be crossed in there. FastBridge is our district-wide assessment tool, so we're starting to do some FastBridge assessments this week, September nineteenth. Our new staff at Lean Elementary have been working on or completing the training modules to help them to do those assessments, and this data will help guide instructions and interventions with students in our, in our curriculum. And then we have new staff essential classes, new district staff met during August In-Service Week to talk about educator effectiveness in each building, and they can, will continue to meet each month through December to learn more about Amory and build relationships with other new staff members here in our district, so that's been a great opportunity. Upcoming events, our FastBridge assessments will be going on all week, teacher in-service, our new curriculum, HMH training. We've talked about parent-teacher conferences, same nights, four to eight, one, one to eight on the sixth. And our Title I, school-wide parent meeting, our first one will be on October sixth along with parent-teacher conferences from four-thirty to six o'clock that night. So stop on in when you're in for conferences for our first school-wide meeting.
Thanks.
All right. Got some good news from People Services, and that comes in the form of grant awards. So last spring, took a look at the Transition Readiness Grant application that is associated with Indicator fourteen, which is really about increasing employment skills for students with disabilities. So we took a look at that grant application, really modeled our application after the youth apprenticeship, which is a good program that's up and running here in Amory already, and kind of just tweaked that and made a few changes to focus on school-to-work skills among students with disabilities. So the goals are around building curriculum and instruction, which, you know, we already do, but the grant supplements that, to purchase some new curriculum, Conover Credits, Brigants, which is a, a Transition Readiness Curriculum. And the goal is to then deliver that curriculum and instruction to those students, hook them up through, through a community approach of getting them in competitive, work-based experiences, which is a job, right? So competitive means that they're paid the same wage as anybody else, so they go through the interview process, they're hired on as an employee at that business. The step further that the grant allows us to do is to reimburse those cooperating employers. They're taking on a student really that may or may not have that same readiness as typically developing student, and so the grant allows us to reimburse them for that wage. So it's a pretty big deal, pretty big benefit to a student, it's a big benefit to an employer who's going to then allow for kids to get skills in the workplace and then also, you know, have some additional help in their, in their business. So Amory's total award for that for this year was sixty-five thousand dollars. So we're looking at really, over the next few months, putting some things into place to get kids out that second semester. We're looking at about five to six kids. We hope to have them placed in jobs with local businesses and are pretty excited about that. I was talking at the Amory Community Club with a couple of business owners who are already interested in asking questions about it. Many of them are familiar with the youth apprenticeship, and so they're pleased to have another option to look at. The Wisconsin Council for Administrators, a special services conference is coming up at the end of the month. This is kind of, the, the three big ones are this one, the Federal Funding Conference, and then the State Superintendent Conference on Special Education. A good opportunity to network with others that are in this People Services Director position. I get about a monthly meeting with some of our regional directors. You get a little wider view at the state conference. Not going to, it's a three-day conference, probably not going to have time to get away for that, but looking to kind of really focus in on a couple of the agenda items and hope to attend at least one of those days. At the beginning of the month here, October sixth, we have Child Development Days, that's our screening for two-and-a-half to four-year-old students that have not yet entered school in 4K. And that's going to be at the elementary school, coinciding with parent-teacher conferences from 1:00 PM to 7:00 PM on Thursday, October sixth. Looking into November, we're, we have a Skill Streaming Training, that's a social skills curriculum. We brought Dr. Sheldon Bratton of the Behavioral Institute for Children and Adolescents. He did some training just before school began on the Skill Streaming Curriculum, and good feedback. The mental health grant helped us fund that professional development, and just had some good feedback from staff, so we're going to bring him back and train our intermediate and middle staff with that curriculum. And then finally, procedural compliance self-assessment, you'll hear bits about this. We're scheduled to do our e-course training on September twenty-eighth, and who's we? That's a, a small group of four or five special ed teachers, school psychologists, one, one here in the room here, so I can tell she's very excited to do this e-course training for the procedural compliance self-assessment, so. But important stuff this year, they're going to focus on evaluation and IEP implementation, school discipline, and students on shortened days. That's all I have for you.
You got a lot. Thank you so much. And nothing for me, Ken?
No.
Okay.
Keith, I, can I just ask, I just don't know, is FastBridge, Paula, maybe you can help me out? Is that, how many schools is that for? Is that for you also, Tom?
Yeah, it goes across the district.
We use FastBridge primarily to screen students of math and reading ability, and then that helps us make determinations on students that may need some interventions or some help to try and bridge that gap. Special ed uses it quite a bit with students trying to see how much their...
Special Ed uses it quite a bit with students, trying to see how much they're growing. We progress monitor, which means that the kids take it frequently. If they're showing a need, that they're getting interventions, and it tracks the progress on a chart and shows how much they're growing in their math and reading ability.
When does that data, like, how long does it take to get that data to the school, to the district?
From, oh, that's, we get it the next day, maybe, or that night, you know, that same day.
Basically, as soon as they're completed with the assessment, it falls into that student's data.
And then, how long is it gonna take to implement HMH?
Oh, that's gonna take the course of the school year and moving forward as far as, we're already teaching it, but it's just the training and just diving deeper into it and being able to use all of the interventions and so forth that are a part of it. So that's a concept, because our teachers just got all of the materials in hand in, like, July, so it's just helping them just to dive deep into it and figure out all the nooks and crannies of the curriculum.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we'll go on to our informational item.
Okay. Well, we have a referendum update. We have Chris Anderson, Gary Ziffko, and LHB, Troy Miller. We've seen far too much of each other over the course of the last couple of months. We are going to talk elementary school design, and for those who are waiting with bated breath on high school, you're gonna see high school in October. We'll do one at a time. So I'm not, it looks like Troy's gonna lead us, so I'm gonna turn it over to you, Troy.
Alright. Say, Tom, make sure you turn your screen a little bit, so as you livestream the football game, I can...
No!
Yeah, yeah. Trust me.
Don't let him fool ya, it's minimized down there on the bar.
I'm good.
He's a fellow golfer fan, he's a brethren.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. It's been, yeah, we have, we have, we feel at each other's pain often. Yeah. My wife's an Iowa fan and graduate, and so I'm a golfer fan, and there's the Floyd of Rosedale, the little pig that they play for, the trophy, and so our kids gave us a replica of Floyd of Rosedale. It's about, about this tall and this long, and my wife tells me every year, is this the year that my side of the dresser starts to fade the same way yours is? I think it's been one out of 10 tries that the golfers have actually won the, won the stupid pig, but, but anyway. That being said, you know, lots of things change, and, and, you know, we can point to a number of things that have been frustrating for Gary and I. Number one is, when I started, I got my license for an architecture 30 years ago, and the codebooks used to fit on a three-foot shelf in my office, and now I've got four three-foot wide shelves with four shelves in each stack just for the codebooks that we have to look at in order to design a building. And every time we go before a code official, it's, some of it's left up to interpretation and some of it's what code official you might get, and, and so for Gary and I, it's like we've done a couple of projects together where the code has consistently been interpreted one way, and then all of a sudden the code official says, nope, today, we're gonna look at it a different way, because I went to a meeting and I think we've been reading it wrong. And so we've had a number of things that have just caused us to say, oh, my gosh, timeout here, we need to have a real meeting with the code department to go through things. And the other part of it is just inflation in general. You know, when you think about how much things cost, and people go to the grocery store and say, oh, my heavens, you know, look at how much a carton of eggs costs today, a lot of that gets back to, to what is the price of fuel oil? And everything we do basically evolves around fuel, and everything we make has some component of fuel oil in it. You know, ask my, my three daughters about their poor Lululemon bill, you know, even, even our leggings are made out of oil, right? And so when we think about the cost impacts as we've been going through, we've taken a little break in terms of when we've come to visit, because we are trying to balance lots of things, we're trying to wrap our arms around a number of things, and we have a project going on at the middle school. We actually bid it out in Christmas this last year, thinking that we would have everything done and have heat pumps on site if we gave contractors a five-month warning saying that in five months, we need heat pumps on site, so the project's done in August. Guess when the last heat pumps are expected to show up right now? November. Guess what we need a heat pump for?
Winter.
Heating, exactly, that's why. Heat pump is something that's very important, so we're working with folks to say, how are we gonna piece this system together? And if it's frustrating on our side, just think of the contractor who's stuck here, trying to maintain a system that's not built into his budget, and waiting for heat pumps to show up, and the delay costs and everything else that keep mounting. And so as we start looking at how we pull together estimates and designs and things like that, we're trying to take that into account, because contractors keep padding their numbers to say, how long's it gonna take to get something to the job site? And probably the biggest thing right now is roof insulation. Right now, if we order roof insulation, it will come in 12 months. 12 months to wait for roof insulation and the quantity it takes to do the high school, right? And so we think about all that stuff, and we're trying to really gear in and say, what is it that we want to accomplish? And at the elementary school, we had one code interpretation that we were looking at and saying, we can do a 20,000-square-foot addition, just like we did up at Spooner, and it's gonna go perfectly fine, because all I need is a two-hour wall to separate the new construction from the old construction. And the state has come back now and said, oh, hold on here, we've now gone to a code seminar, we think we've interpreted this incorrectly. In education, you need a three-hour wall. Well, a three-hour wall is very expensive, and so we've had to go back and retool and rethink and talk to poor Paula. Every time she turns around and goes home at night, she's like, okay, I'm starting to understand this, I don't, I don't have to sleep real hard, because I know when I come back, I'm gonna have to change something again. But when we went to referendum and we said, what are we gonna accomplish? We said, the building and site maintenance is number one, that has to be done, and that includes mechanicals, electricals, it is casework, it is so many things that just when you have something that's as old as the elementary and the high school, need to be updated and replaced. Things wear out. And so all the way through Sean's presentations, he said, those are the number-one things we need to take care of. And then we said, what can we do with regard to academics? We looked at seven options. We looked at an option, believe it or not, that was 12,000 square feet in new building, and it didn't work as efficiently as the addition that we're looking at right now that's 9,500. You would think more square footage would be a better deal for the district, you know, more space, do more things, but if it's in the wrong place, it's unusable space. And if it's unusable space, you still have to clean it, heat it, maintain it, and do all those other things. So as we've been going through all these iterations, we have been very cognitive of, cognis...
Cognizant.
There you go. Cognizant. It's my Minnesota graduate, master's program.
I won't do that, I go.
But, but we've been going through those things and trying to say, man, what is it that we can do to make sure that we're being good stewards of the money, being prepared for what happens if costs continue to go up? Because the worst thing that would happen is, we go out to bid, we can't afford what, what comes back, and then we gotta take another three months to redesign, and then what do you think happens in three months? Things might go up again. So we're trying to be very vigilant in terms of how we look at those things and how we spend those monies. But number one, first and foremost for all the buildings, is we gotta fix what we have. What are those things that have to be done? And then start looking at the other program items as we move through. Next slide. So what is it we're doing? We started out looking at an addition on the north side of the building, which is this area right here. So when we did the original diagram, we said, let's do an addition there. So we, we did all of that legwork, went and presented it to the state, and they came back and said, well, even though it's less than 20,000 square feet, we're gonna expect you to build a three-hour wall. So what a three-hour wall means is it takes three hours, if there's a fire, for it to pass from one side to the other, and we have to control smoke, we have to do all of these other things, and the exterior wall that's there doesn't meet the three-hour rating. So that means we have to build a new wall up against the existing one, and it has to be 30 inches taller than the existing roof structure. Well, if you look at the roof, we've got valleys and peaks and all the rest of that stuff, and so it ended up being that that one wall was gonna be a million and a half dollars just for the wall. And so we started stepping back and saying, alright, we definitely can't afford that. So just in terms of what it causes for snowdrift load on a wood structure and all the rest of it, so we ended up going back and working with Paula and everybody else and saying, what can we live with? And for the most part, most of the staff in the building aren't getting a whole lot other than hot water and a new, couple new pieces of casework. And so really what we were looking at was, what's the size of the room that we need for those 4KK programs? What are their greatest needs in terms of, when they come to school, getting them all to the same level and properly preparing them for first grade? And so by doing the addition on the south side, which is what you're seeing right here, these six rooms become the addition, we focused on, what do those kids need and what do the staff need to do a great job preparing students for first and second grade? And so by creating this as your 4KK option at that end of the building, we get to seal them off in the case of an emergency, so all these little dash red lines are doors that lock and separate them from the rest of the building in the case of, in case of an emergency. So if there's a, if there's an issue in the building where you need to go into lockdown, those kids are sealed off from the rest of the building and they have separate exits out. Then we started to look at and say, well, they need a bigger classroom, because they just got more stuff. We'd love to have bathrooms inside the classroom, because we lose so much time and we lose so many students that are wandering out to use bathrooms elsewhere. And so as we looked at all of that, it just made sense to do it at that end of the building, right? So, so that's really where we ended up landing, is if we did that, clubhouse early childhood still at this end of the building, we're moving it into the J Wing. We did that because that's the space that's needed and necessary for the program to expand and grow. If we moved it anywhere else, we have a challenge of people who are coming to the building to drop off and pick up their kids, how do we handle safe and secure? They're coming at all hours of the day, these are people that aren't identifiable, they're gonna be the staff. And, and so it made sense there. This is the new front entry, right, to the building. This is still the front of the building publicly, but this is the new entry for parents to do pickup and drop-off, deliveries, things like that, because if it's here, here's the admin and the entry area to club care early childhood, and if you go the other way, now we're into the elementary school, which is a whole different process, a whole different group of kids. So one entry can be monitored by many different folks. We have opportunities to go into lockdown to seal entire wings off in the moment's notice, and, and we really looked at, how do we continue that whole process and effort of saying, how do we efficiently use space? So we've got our 4KK program over here with the Montessori. On this end, we now have Montessori for first and second grade with a project slab and a support room for your support staff, as well as storage of curriculum and all those things that continue to cycle through. So we've really, I think, done a good job of working with, with Paula, and in particular, the staff has been wonderful, and every time we go back and say, oh, guess what, we're pulling one more thing away, they've been so understanding and, and so wonderful that way. So when we look at how we're kind of pulling this all together, that's what's happening. So, next slide. We're also looking at moving the administration, but that is gonna be as an alternate. So we're designing it, we're doing everything to say, here's what's gonna happen if we have the money, and if we don't, it'll stay where it is and we'll use electronics to do a very similar sort of thing. But if it happens and the alternate works, you would come into the school through a secured vestibule, there's a transaction window, so that if people can do their business without even entering the building, they can just do it out of window, it happens there. If they do need to come in, they come into the office to a secured vestibule, and they have to be buzzed out. So the only way you can leave the office area if you come into the building is if somebody hits a button and allows you to pass through to get to the rest of the building. If there is an incident or something like that, all those red dotted lines are all doors that close to seal the building off from anywhere else. And if we can't move the admin here, all of this happens remotely, very similar to what happens now, but we still have that level of, that level of effort that happens there. So the other thing to keep in mind is, these are also secured doors, and the frustration to staff will be, if you want to go to the office, guess what you have to have? You have to have your phone. So to get into the office, you have to have a key, to get out of the office, you have to have your key, and that's just the way the doors will work to make sure that everybody's safe and secure. Next slide. The big challenge is, I mentioned the three-hour wall before, so for the board members, what happens is, right now, this is the wall, that's the current existing wall that, that exists. By code, this is supposed to be a three-hour wall. Well, if you can see what happens right here, if we want this to be one large learning commons with lockers and things like that, a three-hour wall really breaks it up. So what we've done is, we've gone to the state and said, here's what we propose. We will sprinkle this area of the building with fire suppression system. In return, we would like a one-hour reduction of the wall rating, so that we don't have to spend money on that duplicate and structural effort. And, and so right now, we're in the process of that petition process, so addition will look like this regardless of what we do. It's just, what we end up with a, right now, I think we're $150,000 under budget. If we do this, we're about $350,000 under budget if we get them to agree to move the wall here and allow us to sprinkle the building and take a reduction. Some people might say, why aren't you gonna sprinkle the whole building? But the answer is, there's not enough water pressure to do that without a heat, without a fire pump, and a fire pump is, it starts at $100,000 and goes up from there. So, so those are the things that we're kind of up against in what we're doing right now in our preliminary review with the state. I think they're very positive in saying that we'll allow you to do a two-hour wall, provide fire suppression, because you are exceeding what the intent of the code is, and so that works for us financially on the overall budget of the project. But that's, some of the graphics you've been seeing and things like that, where we talked about, what is a three-hour wall versus a two-hour wall? From the perspective of construction, there's a big difference, and, and so hopefully that works in our favor, both programmatically with regard to some of these issues, as well as financially.
So a two-hour wall with a sprinkler system versus the three-hour wall, is it savings, even putting in the sprinkler system, of around $200,000, is what you're saying? Okay.
Yep. Those walls get expensive, because it's, it's a redundancy of, of basically structure, number one, and, and number two, it is gonna require a large amount of structural work to beef up the existing building, because it's, it's heavy timber construction, and those, those heavy timbers aren't designed to carry the additional snow load and drift load when we build a building, so. This is the site plan, as we're kind of weighing it out right now, so just kind of a quick understanding of what's, what's there, how things will happen. Originally, this is what we were looking to accomplish that we've had to move away from, but the visitor parking, deliveries, parent drop-off, is gonna be located here, and then looking at how all the playgrounds are continuing to stay. So, next slide. And then here, looking at where the playgrounds are going and where the kids are moving towards, just to kind of give you an idea of how that works. The other thing is looking at one-way traffic, you know, during certain times of the day will really help improve the traffic flow around the building. You know, over the years I've been here, I think I've been working here, George, seven years, I've been doing projects here, and, and if there's one time I don't wanna be here, it's when, it's when school's out, right? So if we can do and look at, you know, one-way ins and outs, and just work with the flows that you have around the site, we can dramatically improve how people get in and out, and you're already starting to do some of that, so it shouldn't be a whole lot of confusion as you continue to move and move.
Those extra classrooms that, that you wanted to put in originally, it was like on the north end of the building, right? So are those this?
We're gonna put them on the north.
But now, now are those going to be relocated to the south, or is it just completely gone at all?
We are putting six, six additional classrooms on the south side. So these six aren't new, so it's 9,400 square feet. Where on the other side, we were doing about 10,500.
10,000.
So we lost about 1,000 square feet, even though there's more rooms that were being done previously.
Yeah.
The one thing that we did was we increased the room sizes.
See that? Okay.
And it also allows for similarity of age level of kid? Maybe you wanna speak to that, Paula?
Yeah, when we're looking at those early childhood programs, 4K and kindergarten, and then the Montessori combination, 4K kindergarten, they just need more space when they have nap time and they have stations for kids, and they have a lot of supplies that go with that. So right now, those four rooms that are currently on there are about 1,200 square feet, and moving those rooms to the other side of the building, got them more between 950 and 1,000, so they were losing quite a bit of space and storage to keep their supplies, so.
Those six, those six new rooms were approximately 1,350, 1,400. They'll be the six biggest rooms in the, in the building, and there'll be 4K classrooms who need more space.
Correct.
So are we still gonna, by doing this... So are we still going to, by doing this, are we still going to have space then for the kids who need it, you know, for extra, we talked about extra learning, kids that need to be pulled out, all of those things because we're so tight there in space?
Yes, yes, we will.
Instead of just having it all geared towards the 4K?
Well, we're doing that right now in hallways with the addition of six classrooms. You're freeing up space to do just that. And Troy's pointing at one area that it's going to happen.
So this area right here will be basically an open learning commons for the 4KK program for pullout as well as, you know, possibly to do kind of rollout space for, we're talking about possibly doing the wet area out there so that they could do some of the art and things like that in this area. The other thing we did was there's right now a bathroom that's located right here. We're getting rid of that because the bathroom doesn't meet code, doesn't meet accessibility and so many other things. So rather than rebuild it and we basically lose two fixtures, we decided that we would put these bathrooms so that they're accessible within the rooms so the kids don't have to leave the room, the teachers don't have to stand there with one eye in the room and one eye down the hall making sure that Johnny or Suzie comes back. So all of those changes are, are things that added to, you know, what the, what the overall cost is. But, you know, some of the other things that we've done is when we don't have addition on the north, we still have to maintain a fire loop all the way around the building. We don't have to redo that. We don't have to redo the hard service play area. So there's a lot of things on the exterior of the building we also need because another thing that we have was if you have an addition on the north side, we need a storm water retention cell on that side and we need the storm cell, storm water retention cell on this side for the parking lot. Now we just need one. And, you know, those things aren't cheap either. So we did save a lot of money on site, we saved money on the construction and that's really where our savings are coming from. So just a lot of rethinking.
It really just got all of our early child, early childhood learning together as well in the other design. 4K was on one side of the building and kindergarten was on the other. So it really just got those, those young ones all together so that they could work together within that common learning space too.
And so that's, you know, so that common learning space will be for like the 4K and the kindergarten, but then what about our first and second graders? Is this, does this open up space for them then that they can go elsewhere for that or?
If you go back one more slide. One more, two, I have two slides. So right now, we've got first and second grade on, on either side and I don't know which will be where and that's for Paula to work out.
I think we know. They noticed immediately they were relocated.
Room assignments have not been filed.
Correct.
I read that. And I knew why that disclaimer was put in there.
Paul and I thank you.
Well, we have the projects lab down here now. We have this right here is support staff, curriculum retrieves of square footage in other locations, including storage for gym. There are lots of areas now that we're creating pockets about and we're still having conversations about, right now, we've got art and science here. And if the admin does move, we move art and music, art and science, art and music from here down to here. We might want to just put art and music down here to begin with. And that way, if you do find money down the road and want to make this move, you're not moving a program again because the rooms are of similar size, similar amenities, it's just a matter of how we look at those pieces. So there's lots of things that we're still kind of in flux and still moving around, but to answer your question, yes, the rooms are there, they're just pointed differently. And, and with, you know, the things that are happening down here with first and second graders and their support spaces, you know, we're no longer spending a lot of time moving. That's one thing that we really talked about with Cheryl previously and now with Paula is how do we reduce the amount of steps that kids are taking every day by putting stuff where it needs to be? And that's, you know, when you think about first and second graders and who's going to watch them when they move from one space to the next, you don't trust them to go out in the hallways by themselves because they, the shiny ball is everywhere. So, you know, we want to make sure that they find their way back. So, you know, those adjacencies become very important as well. So we're also just looking at, you know, again, different parking circulation scenarios, bus stacking and all of that stuff. Again, really focused on how do we spend time looking at and making sure that whether it's the site, whether it's the building, whether it's the placement of programs, we're doing everything we can to make sure that we're thinking about how to move people quickly, efficiently and safely. Exciting.
Well, this is just about the construction and the base of the project. So once we bid it out and build it, like how are we going to build it and how will it affect the school year? So this is about a 10 month project is what we keep estimating. We would start to, start to build a year from now, so we bid it out this Christmas, January, come back and with the final budget. And then we would procure, try to get all these long lead time items ordered. And then we would start a year from now with the, with the footings foundation. This area would be a staging area throughout the whole school year. So we would come in and kind of fence this area out. The sidewalk out front would remain open, the sidewalk up the side would remain open. Again, this would be construction for the whole, construction staging, so trailers, parking, storage. Footings foundations in the, in the fall, winter, in the building structure, January, February with the roof on. And then we do finishes that summer of '24 along with whatever, along with any of the renovation that would happen inside the building. You know, if we do the offices, that would happen in the summer of '24 as well. So all in all, it's kind of wrapped up and out of your, out of your hair by August of 2024. A brief synopsis of a lot of stuff that's going to happen in that year, but if you've got any questions?
Well, before we get to that, Andy, how's my kicker doing for Buffalo?
My quarterback broke his ankle yesterday. Sorry about that.
See, I'm short and sweet. He, he must not watch football, he doesn't care.
You don't think the state's going to back down on the three hour firewall?
I think they will. We had a really good conversation with them. There's a, there's more people that have to weigh in than just one, which we had a preliminary review and we have, not Jack Miller, Eric. So Eric is our code reviewer. We reviewed everything with him. He wanted to make sure the local officials signed off on it, which they did today. So we'll be forwarding that paperwork. And, and once we submit it, Eric will become our advocate if he allows the petition to move forward and represent us in front of his peers.
So right now, what the cost between a sprinkler system and a three hour wall is?
So if you look at everything that's kind of wrapped into it, it's about $200,000.
200. And we have the water service available?
We have the water service to do what we're planning.
Just that area.
To do that area.
Yeah, if we could actually probably add about another 4,000 square feet and be safe, anything beyond that would require a fire pump. So we want to try to avoid that. When we size the system coming in, we will be sizing the riser room to accommodate all of that in the future. So if you were to do another addition, the last thing you want to get caught is redoing something that you just did now. So we are going to make sure that the fire, the fire riser will.
Yeah, because a sprinkler doesn't come without annual, and that's what, a couple grand, 2,500?
More than that. It's when you look at a three hour wall, every penetration has a maintenance cost to it. And George despises raided walls as he should. He is doing everything he can to try to hold the line that we don't because if you have a fire smoke damper that's three hours, that's probably about, it's, right now, it's running about $3,500 per fire smoke damper for annual maintenance and, and whatnot. So, you know, if you look at those things, they add up fast. And when you're looking at the addition on the north end, we were looking at 12 wall penetrations that would require some sort of fire smoke separation. And, you know, again, all that adds up and we try to avoid this.
40,000 a year.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So, so it's not, you know, when we do our design work, we work really hard to think not only about what's the original construction cost, but what's the operational cost? Because every square foot in the building has to be heated, potentially cooled, has to be cleaned, you know, and the list goes on and on and on. So when you build it, it's not the only cost you have. It's, it's, it's an ongoing cost for the district and we're, you know, the fire suppression system that we're proposing to put in along with the two hour wall, it's cheaper, plus also it's going to, it's going to be the least amount of maintenance and operation cost for you year over year. So we're going through the same thing right now with the high school. We had planned on doing a 2,000 or $2 million addition at the high school. And once we ran into the hurdle at the elementary where they said, this is where we're drawing the line now, not here, it's now here, first thing we did was we said, we're not doing an addition. So, so we're going through all of those processes right now and the next time we come back, we'll be going through the high school and the staff there. You go home crying at night sometimes.
I could just see him not being as agreeable as Paula.
He was a much happier person when we started the process a few months ago. But, but the staff has been wonderful because when we didn't do a $2 million addition, that meant everybody had to give up space inside the building. So the media center is getting a little smaller, this space is getting a little smaller. Like the people who are elated over the top are, are the science folks and you'll, you'll be able to see why. But, but, you know, a $2 million addition is, you know, dollars that are going to be spent elsewhere in the building trying to make improvements to more than, more than what some, some of the folks had hoped, so.
I'd let, go ahead.
Oh, I was just, so because of the addition is now going on to the south, it looks like the playground is going to get moved. So they'll be walking maybe like through that parking lot?
There's a contingency to have it right outside in the L shape. If you could go to that slide perhaps that we could see right there, that L shape versus addition right there. And that's the interest that 4K and K have. Paula, I don't want to speak for you, but you've shook your head yes many times when I brought this up. That's our preference. And the big reason goes back to bathrooms. If you're out at that playground, you got to get back to the bathroom, you got a problem. They're going to go. I mean, that's just reality. So closer is better. We have the same concerns, Aaron.
Go to the last, that last slide with the timeline.
Sure.
Just to, I just want to clarify if someone's looking at that. So this construction begins April, May of 2023. That's for the high school. So the high school's a bigger beast. That's about a 16 month duration. The elementary school's a little bit shorter, so we're going to start that a little bit later. But it will come back when we do the high school and we will basically plan and show you kind of how we plan to march across, across that.
I'd like to take the opportunity to thank Paula and the elementary staff. We've met so many times, Paula and I particularly, but meeting with them on Friday as grade level teams, they are so receptive, they have been so flexible, they've been so kind about all of it. And after school, we met with all staff, same receptive audience. They are super excited about what we can, what we can do here. They know that we're not getting everything we want, but we're doing exactly what we said we were going to do and they're being incredibly gracious about it. So that's, that's been my experience with them. They have been phenomenal.
That's awesome because these projects are obviously going to be long. You guys are going to be around for a while. It's, it's going to be a lot of cooperation and frustration and so thanks to the staff for putting in and doing what it takes to get this done. I think it's going to be really great when we get it all done.
I think it's going to be great. I'd sort of, my, the staff and I have been talking about how exciting now this is becoming because it's becoming real and, and it is, they've just been fantastic and just been thinking out of the box, all over the place and just thinking what's best for kids, what do we need? It's, yeah, it's been a great process.
And thank you to Cross Anderson and LHB. We're working with the best, this is Claire.
So how much to move the administration office in the elementary to that site?
About $450,000 renovation. So that's, that's the element. So we're thinking we're, we're under a little bit and that's, you know, we do come in under that footing.
Sounds like if you, if you go with the sprinkler at 200,000, you're almost halfway there.
I think I can confidently speak for Paula and I, we want to be able to make that happen. The elementary staff want to make that happen. We did a building and grounds tour on, what day was that? Wednesday of last week? Joel was part of that. That was the conversation we had. I don't want to speak for you, Joel, but it, I think it's of interest to make it a safer and more secure setting.
Exactly. About safety. You have me at the safety aspect of putting it there.
It just makes the most sense from a safe and secure standpoint. It's right there.
And every, every decision that we're making, whether it's on the outside by not building two storm water retention cells to inside trying to avoid the cost of a three hour wall, you know, everything we are doing is to, is to try to make sure that that, that happens.
We appreciate that.
Yep.
The taxpayers appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
The only up there is Kirk Cousins and Justin Jefferson making hard out of the field.
I hope Tommy, you okay?
He knows better, he's looking at it right now.
What if he turned around and it was the Twins game?
I'm not that much of a basketball fan.
All right.
All right, well, I need to go watch the game.
Enjoy. Thank you.
Next up is donations and grants that we've received.
We have never had a presentation on donations and grants this lengthy and that is a really good thing. So I'm going to run through it and you can follow along. We've got a lot of school supply donations and let's run through them. We've got the Amory VFW, mini boxes of a variety of supplies distributed throughout the buildings, Brautein, donation to the intermediate school of school supplies, Johnson Ford, a donation of school supplies to Lean Elementary School, Process Technology Intermediate School, school supplies, and also a $400 donation to the Angel Fund.
Wow.
Wisconsin Credit Union, donation of school supplies for Amory High School students. Amory Police Department, thank you for holding a school supply drive to benefit the kids of our community. And then other donations. Elaine Omen, donation of $500 to the Future School Farm Orchard in memory of Ken Omen. Amory Lions Club, donation of $2,032 to the Angel Fund as proceeds from the annual golf tournament. First Lutheran Church, thank you for assembling and donating hygiene kits for the fifth graders, deodorant, shampoo, toothpaste and toothbrushes. Journey Church, thank you for the delicious meat and cheese trays and crackers delivered to each school building. The Grunland family donated $3,000 towards the new press box sound system for the football field and track. That went sort of on the fritz here within the last seven to 10 days, so that money was used for that purpose. Grants, a school district of Amory Mental Health Fund received a $5,000 grant from the Amory Area Community Foundation Endowment Fund of the Amory Area Community Foundation. Amory FFA received a grant of $6,624.50 for the Ed H and Donald O Fund of the Amory Area Community Foundation. Amory Trap Shooting Team received a $799 grant from the USA Midway Foundation. And that is it and that is awesome.
I just think of all the dollars added up here of what came into this district and largely from just our community and wow, how do you even say thank you for all of that? Thank you isn't, isn't enough. I mean, in addition to everything that this community does and then to have a back to school donation and, and report like that is just more than people can say, but that's what our community does, so hats off to Amory once again.
Yep. They keep supporting our, our great work here and our staff that are doing wonderful. And that's, that's how it happens. We get, we get support from everybody and that's so cool. Thank you so much.
With that, I'll make a motion to accept those.
All right. And a second?
Second.
Dale, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
Many, many thanks. Thank you.
Again. Next, we'll go to our personnel items.
Okay, new employment and athletic contracts, Travis Bowermeister as a van driver, Antonia Danielson, clubhouse lead teacher, Lisa Gunderson, clubhouse assistant teacher, Tessa Ingham, special ed para, Doty Larson, clubhouse assistant teacher, Aima Ledenza, clubhouse lead teacher, Tracy Perkins, school nutrition, and Zachary Rowe for grounds mechanic. Reassignments, Sue Bockel moving from elementary- Reassignments, Sue Bockel moving from elementary classroom para to title one para, Jana Omen moving from Montessori classroom para to high school guidance office para, Haley Tyberg, school nutrition, moving to elementary classroom para, Mary Ziegler, title one para to Montessori classroom para. And resignations for Doty Larson and Leah Maxon in, in clubhouse as a assistant teacher and Jana Omen as a clubhouse worker. And you'll need a action to accept that personnel action.
I'll make a motion that we accept personnel.
Aaron makes motion. Joe seconds, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. There we go. Do we have no need for closed?
No, sir.
Move to adjourn.
Chair moves to adjourn. And Aaron seconds, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, adjourn.